The school board of Duval County School District is now convened in its regular monthly meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. The vision statement of the Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life." The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is, "To provide educational excellence in every school, in every classroom, for every student, every day." The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to the reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the school board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the January 10th, 2022 school board meeting will be held on December 21st, 2021 at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comments portion of the board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. The CDC currently recommends that everyone two years of age or older who are not fully vaccinated should wear a mask indoor in indoor public spaces. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. We will start with an opening message. Blake, we'll start with, we invite you to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start this evening with a presentation from Pine Forest School of the Arts.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Michelle Matthews. I'm the proud principal of Pine Forest School of the Arts. We are the dedicated elementary arts magnet school here in Duval County, right down the road. So I've been there four years and I'm super proud on behalf of my faculty and staff. We are so excited to be honored here tonight and recognized. And I do have an arts background. My two daughters that are with me are very much artsy and one produced this video of my time in the classroom. So it's just a quick showcase of our school, both the arts and academics, and that's what I have. Thank you again for having us.
So that's just a snippet of the month of October, and I invite you to come out. What are you waiting for? Like the video says, come out and see what we're about. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Matthews. Yes, round of applause. Thank you so much, Principal Matthews. I do want to give Board Member Pearson an opportunity to say a few words. I'm sure she's excited about all that you're doing over there at Pine Forest.
Yeah, so what I love about that video is it showcased not only our elementary arts magnet, but it showcased one of our DA students who put the video together. So it's really showing the full scope of our elementary to high school and what you can get. I also like that it showed that as a dedicated arts magnet, there's still a strong emphasis on academics and even some PE time with hula hoops. And so you're getting that well-rounded with the arts focus. If you are interested in Pine Forest, like Principal Matthews said, it is located in mid-county in District 3, conveniently off of I-95. If you're driving north to work, it would be an easy, just stop off 95, drop your kids, get back on 95, go to work. So easy. And if you are interested, they will be represented at the School Choice Expo on January 8th. They will have a virtual booth there. Your opportunity to apply for Pine Forest School of the Arts begins on January 1st, when the applications will appear in your parent's focus portal. And you have until February 28th to put that in and to put Pine Forest School of the Arts as your number one choice for elementary.
Thank you.
Awesome. Once again, thank you, Principal. Let's give them one more round of applause, Principal Matthews and Pine Forest School of the Arts. Thank you so much, Board Member Pearson for that as well. Now we'll move on to Ms. Vicky Pierre. We'll begin our presentations for this evening.
We begin with a school that's one of only seven in the state and one of just 325 in the entire nation. That is Jacksonville Beach Elementary School, and tonight we celebrate its designation as a national blue ribbon school by the U.S. Department of Education. According to the U.S. DOE, this honor is based upon a school's overall academic performance or its progress in closing achievement gaps. Jacksonville Beach Elementary has been designated as an exemplary high-performing school, meaning it's among the state's highest-performing schools. So how does one become a national blue ribbon school? Well, the Department of Education invites the top education officials in each state to nominate schools. Those schools are then invited to apply, providing information about curriculum and instruction, strategy for academic success, school climate and culture, and much more. The entire process from the nomination to earning the award takes about a year. State data showed that in 2019, this school was the highest-performing elementary school in the district, the second-highest performing in the state when compared to similar schools, and it ranked within the top five in all elementary schools in the state in all tested subject areas. By the way, Jacksonville Beach has earned the blue ribbon school status before, both in 2003 and in 2015. Joining us tonight from Jacksonville Beach Elementary is Principal Cameron Mattingly, along with a few members of the school's leadership team. That includes Johanna Kolb, standards coach, Ayesha Johnson, 4th grade math teacher, and Edna Chapman, assistant principal. Congratulations, and join us in honoring Jacksonville Beach Elementary as a national blue ribbon school.
I want to have the board member come down as well.
Ms. Pierre, before Jacksonville Beach sits down, a report just came out yesterday from the US News and Washington Post, for the first time, they are ranking elementary and middle schools. And Jacksonville Beach was ranked number one in the state of Florida. So it's ranked number one for elementary as well as ranked number one for magnet elementary.
Congratulations. Continuing in this good news, not everyone can say that they're among the best in the nation, but tonight we're celebrating 10 Team Duval high schools that can in fact make that claim. The distinction, they are ranked among US News and World Report's best high schools in the nation. According to the company, "A great high school, quote, 'educates all students from different social and economic backgrounds, exposing them to challenging coursework on the path to graduation.'" These schools were ranked on six criteria: college readiness, math and reading proficiency, math and reading performance, college curriculum breadth, and graduation rate. Of our schools that made this list, seven were also recognized as great magnet schools. So at this time, we'll be recognizing each of these schools one by one, and each will be receiving an award and a banner, as you can see. We begin with Atlantic Coast High School, and here to receive their award this evening is Principal Michael George. Congratulations. The next school on our list is Darnell Cookman School of the Medical Arts, which also ranked among the nation's best magnet schools. I don't believe the principal is here this evening, but we congratulate them. We also congratulate Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, a best high school and magnet school, and I don't believe they're here this evening, but we congratulate them. Our next school is Duncan Fletcher High School, and here tonight is Principal Dean Ledford. Congratulations. And so our next high school is Mandarin High School, a best high school and a best magnet school. Principal Sarah Bravo is here on behalf of the school. Congratulations. Another best high school and magnet school is Paxton School for Advanced Studies. I don't believe they're here this evening, but we congratulate them. Next is Riverside High School, a best high school and magnet school. Principal Tim Fagins is here this evening. Congratulations. We now have Samuel Wulfsen School for Advanced Studies and Leadership, a best high school and a best magnet school. And with us is Principal Chris Begley. Congratulations to them. Sandalwood High School is also on the list, and I do not believe they're here this evening, but we congratulate them. And finally, we recognize Stanton College Preparatory School, a best high school and magnet school. And on behalf of the school is Assistant Principal Paul Davis. Congratulations.
Got to keep going, Mr. Davis. Got to see the S. There you go.
Congratulations to all of our best high schools. For our final presentation, we recognize a recent Team Duval graduate for achieving something that very few students achieve: perfection. From the very, very beginnings of her education, all the way through her last day as a senior at Stanton, she never missed one day of school. We now wish to honor Tamaya Simmons for having, excuse me, Sinclair. My apologies to the family. Tamaya Sinclair for having perfect attendance her entire high school, middle, and elementary career. Now according to her parents... Just a few words to brag on her some more. So according to Tamaya's parents, this was never about getting an award. Going to school every day was a natural part of life. And if you know anything about her family, she had a lot of inspiration. Not only did her older brother also earn perfect attendance, he's in the audience as well, but so did her dad and grandparents. What's more is that Tamaya is from a family of educators, so you could say her love for school is in her blood. Maintaining perfect attendance wasn't always easy and was often a family effort. This included driving to and from cities like Orlando and Atlanta in one day to ensure she didn't miss school. Her tradition of excellence now continues at the post-secondary level. She's currently a freshman at Florida A&amp;M University studying business administration. And she has not missed a day of any school since. We are pleased to obviously have her here this evening, and she's also getting a coin of excellence for this impressive accomplishment. Congratulations again to Ms. Tamaya Sinclair for perfect attendance.
Driving back today.
This concludes this evening's presentations.
Can we have one more round of applause for all of our awards, certificates, and presentations this evening? It's an awesome time to be able to get to celebrate our young people and our amazing staff and students. So, thank you so much. Now we'll move on to the approval of the December 7th, 2021 Agenda. The Duval County School Board approved the December 7th, 2021 Agenda as submitted on November 30th with the following changes. Approval of minutes, item amended. Academic services, approval of agreement with Reed USA Inc., attachment added. Ask for a motion.
With approval.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Jones, seconded by Board Member Anderson. Discussion, seeing none. Call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this Agenda Item 7 to 0. Now we'll move on to the chairman's report. So tonight I wanted to take an opportunity, in my first meeting as the school board chairman, to just ground us in the work that we did with our strategic plan. It won't be before you long, but I just want to make sure that we, I just impress upon the community how much work went into this and the focus that we're going to have as a board driving towards it. So this first slide that you'll see, it was all about a community, getting additional input from the community, listening to the vision and values of our community, combining that with alignment of our organization, our procedures, and our behaviors, and that's where we are. Achieve 26, and we're going to be screaming this to the rooftops because we truly believe that we put a lot of time and effort into this, and this is going to be our focus of attention as we move forward, not just this year, but as you can see, through 2026. So just a few of the key, the key sort of strategic goals that are listed. You see literacy, high-performing schools, soft skills, and vocational opportunities. Literacy, we want to move from the bottom, we'll improve from the bottom quartile of Florida standards to the top quartile by August of 2026. And it's going to take many efforts, and we'll get to some of the things that we're already doing to see that happen. A slash high-performing schools. We want to be recognized as being high-performing, and you, as you saw from the presentations this evening already, we're well on our way with schools earning ABC rating from 2019 moving into 2026. Another area of focus that we want to sort of move into is soft skills. We do a lot of work academically, but also we want to prepare our students for the careers that they're going into and make sure they're prepared for life. So we want to improve the post-secondary readiness of graduates and make sure they're increasing the percentage of students earning some of these soft skills credentials, and we're going to set our baseline to 2023 and then move towards that goal in 2026. And last on this strategic goals, you'll see vocational opportunities. We know that our students are so eclectic and diverse, and they're going off to so many different places and things. And one of the areas that we have been doing such a great job in as a district is in our CTE, our career and technical education, and we want to continue to be recognized, but even further recognized as being high-performing with the percentage of programmings, becoming novice and moving from one performance level to the next, from advanced to master, and then being a national model. So we want to do that, of course, starting in this summer with July, starting last summer, July 21, and moving towards July of 2026. So with our strategic plan, we also had guiding principles. We wanted to make sure all of what we were doing was grounded in some certain principles that we wanted to focus on. So every single goal that you saw was grounded in these principles, and everything we do is actually grounded in these principles. So really, the first one you see is highly effective educators. Once again, our educators are the lifeblood of what we do here in Duval County Public Schools, so we have to continue to recruit and retain highly effective teachers. It does not work without our amazing teachers in the classroom, helping to make all of our goals a reality. The next piece is fiscal transparency. We want to ensure that we are being transparent with the public and the community about all of the money that's coming in and through Duval County Public Schools. Specifically, what you see here is money related to the sales surtax. It's a big, big, a big moment for our schools, and we want to make sure we're being as transparent and as open as possible as we think about that. High-quality partnerships is the next one you'll see. We're a community. What happens inside of Duval County Schools is only enhanced by the partnerships that we have with folks who are working with us. So we want to increase the family-community partnership opportunities, and these are going to align directly to our board goals. Student supports. We oftentimes look at data as a board and really dive into the data based on different subgroups and different delineation of data when it comes to our students. So we want to provide our struggling students with the supports they need, because if we can give them the supports they need, we're going to see all levels and all boats rise when it comes to Duval County's public schools. And last you'll see is culture and climate. We know that the environment our students walk into every day needs to be safe, both from a physical standpoint but also a mental standpoint. So we want to create the culture and climate that improves their academics, their social and their emotional development. So these are the principles. As we looked at every goal that we had, we wanted to make sure that all of these pieces, as we go about our work, these are the things we wanted to do. I just have a few more slides. One of the things oftentimes folks wonder about, who's, you create a strategic plan, but whose job is it to actually implement that strategic plan? And one of the things that we learn as board members right when we get on is there's a delineation of duties. We are not to be in the day-to-day management and work of the superintendent. We have an amazing superintendent. She just got a highly effective rating, just a little shout out there. And we want to let her do her job and let her staff do her job because they do an amazing job. So our job is to go out in the community and look and create this strategic framework for the plan and make sure we make it plain and make it clear. And then the job of the superintendent is look at those keystone projects and the implementation strategies to make it happen. And as you, as we're going to talk a little bit, and you've already seen, some of these things are already, the wheels are already in motion. So we have a great framework. We have some keystone projects that have been identified, and we already have implementation strategies as well that are occurring as we speak. So as I wrap up, I have two more slides. This first one is on literacy. I won't speak to every single one of these, but I'll just highlight just a few of them. Literacy is core and critical to what we do. We have, we want to make sure that our curriculum is aligning with the best standards. We have some new standards that are coming, and we have engaging curriculum, engaging curriculum... have engaging curriculum, engaging curriculum writing teams. We're expanding access to supplemental resource and prompting inquiry, because we know that once students have that ability to read, they're going to be able to advance in those later subject areas. We mentioned high-performing schools. We're mobilizing a network of organizations across the community, because we realize it's going to take more work—not just inside but outside of our schools—to ensure the academic rigor and the strategic resource allocation. Soft skills—identifying the Essential Skills Platform. There's pilot projects that are scheduled to launch in this 2022, 2023 school year. We're really excited to see—and really be a district that is on the forefront. There's not many districts that are really focusing in on the soft skills, but as you talk to employers in the workforce, they will tell you, "Yep, they can do the technical aspects of this work, but do they have the soft skills to show up on time, to work as a teammate, to communicate with us?" And that's what we're doing as a district as well. And then vocation—we mentioned the CTE opportunities, and we want to continue to increase those and provide those to as many students as we can. And the last slide here is just around, once again, our guiding principles, our highly effective educators, professional development, and making sure the resources and the training that we have is going to be successful, and the providing supports at the school level to develop high-yield recruitment and retention strategies. We need all hands on deck to ensure that we not only recruit great educators into our schools, but also maintain and retain them into our schools. Fiscal transparency—we already are doing that with our sales surtax funding and promoting efficacy through investments in our schools. And if you haven't seen the dashboard, amazing way to really see right into the work that we're doing every single day with the half-penny surtax. Partnerships—we have them all over the place, and I love that we do. And I think we're going to be engaging even more community and business partners to provide school supports. And we invite you—if you're listening to this or not listening to this—tell a friend, comment. We want to partner with you as Duval County Public Schools. We have a great plan, and we want to make sure it happens. Student support—supporting academic, the integration of that, and then those direct supports. We've got to directly support our students, and we're planning that to happen. And then the last one—culture and climate here. These integrated targeted interventions to ensure that every school and every student has their basic needs met, but also can do that so they can thrive. So, as we move into this and I end this presentation, there are a couple of key words that I think of as I sit in this chairman's seat. I want us to be focused, which we've been so great at doing that as a board with a strategic plan. Productive, because there's so many things that have been on the plates. I'm looking at my former chairs. There were things that no one could have ever planned, and now's our chance. Now that we see some of those things kind of going, waning a bit, we can be super productive. If we can get through and be as productive as we were with all those issues that we have, we can be really productive. Also, connected. I want us to really be connected as a board too. If we can be connected as a board—we don't have to agree on everything, but I know we can move forward as a board and community if we're connected. And I always say this too—we have to find that joy. If you saw those videos, if you saw our principals laughing and being joyous, we have to have a bit of that in the work that we do too in our schools, because that's what also helps to drive our energy and our work. So, I want to thank you for—that is my report for this evening. Thank you so much for listening, and I will yield the rest of my time. And the next report we will hear is from our superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Willie. As you know, I all—well, for the last 18 months have started my report about COVID-19. I will say that today will be the last report that I will be delivering about COVID-19. Our dashboard will remain up and active, so if individuals want to know more about where we are with COVID-19, it will be on our website. So, this is my last slide that I will be presenting. This is the latest Department of Health data. We are still maintaining about 28 cases per 100,000, and our rolling positivity rate is continuing to stay at 2.3%. As a school district, we are seeing less than 10 cases daily, so our caseload has definitely dropped tremendously. And so, what's happening in our schools is probably actually better than the data that is representing our community. But, the information will remain on our website for families that want to look at information related to their particular school or a cluster of schools by board member district. So, our COVID-19 dashboard is not going anywhere. A couple of other things that will be changing. When we enter winter break, we will be ending our temperature checks for elementary students. So, on December 18, that will be the conclusion of temperature checks. That is one of the mitigating strategies we use, and the reason we are closing out temperature checks is because we finished our first round of vaccinations for elementary students that are ages 5 through 11. And that will continue in our district. We will continue to offer opportunities for vaccinations. We also have the take-home testing kits available at all of our schools. So, if students are experiencing symptoms and parents want to take home COVID tests, they can get one from their school. So, there are many things we are still doing, but did want to give our community update that this will be hopefully the last month that I'm doing a COVID update. So, moving on to things that we want to focus—Board Member Willie, or Chairman Willie—just talked about our strategic plan and Achieve 26. One of the things that we want to focus on as a school district—we talk a lot about climate and culture, and we talk a lot about those two terms as it relates to students, but we don't do a whole lot of conversation as it relates to the adults. How are we serving each other? My team has been focused on a book written by Dennis Noe and Terry Jovanovic called Unleashing Excellence. It's a customer service initiative based on this book. These individuals, I believe, also worked with Disney and other big organizations on developing those exceptional experiences. So, the smart service team leaders consist of members of the executive leadership team with the purpose of creating a customer service climate, not a to-do list, not one more thing, not the thing that when you answer the phone, you say this. It is more about being role models for our schools. So, if we want something to happen, we need to start with ourselves at the district level and be that first model, and then share with our schools, and then make sure that our community knows that whenever they are engaging with Duval County Public Schools, they know that we have a customer service atmosphere. The philosophy is creating exceptional experiences. I have to share a short story. A parent sent me an email last week, and the parent was new to Jacksonville, did not know what to do, found out that you go to the School Choice Building, the parent engagement location. She found that location, and she wrote me to tell me about the customer service she experienced, that Ms. Peak and her team helped her have an exceptional experience. Ms. Peak—this was my surprise for you tonight—and that that exceptional experience was the parent—like, she took me from A to Z on how to get my child registered. And even when we went to the school and we got registered, they called to see, "Did we get all our paperwork in?" They felt that this school can't be but wonderful because of their first experience—which wasn't even at the school—it was at the district. And because we gave them an exceptional experience, I think we have a family that is more inclined to work with their school, work with their school community, work with their child's teacher, work with their PTA, other aspects of our district. And so, that's what we're trying to do—create exceptional experiences. The service standard and order—consider—here are the things that we're going to look under consideration: safety, empathy, accuracy, and responsiveness. One of the things that this district put in place was our constituent services issue system. That system has been so responsive. Many times, I'll get emails back from parents that says, "You did that really fast," or "Thank you very much." It's about making sure that we are responding. But as a district, we also seem—sometimes, not our district. Sometimes, as districts, we only seem to be responsive to families. As a district, the district office needs to be responsive to schools. So, it is—it's a two-way street. It's not just, "Oh, we're going to be responsive to parents," or "We want schools to be responsive to parents." But as a district office, we need to work on areas of weakness on responding back to schools. A teacher may call and have an issue with something. Our goal should be to set a standard. How quickly do we want to be able to say, "We responded to that teacher's needs"? Or, whether it is any of our employees—a paraprofessional or a secretary—our goal is to look at these four items: safety, empathy, accuracy, and responsiveness. So, we will start this process. I will be presenting this information to principals at the principal meeting on Thursday. But again, the rest of this school year is working with district leadership team to create that atmosphere of having exceptional experiences at the district. And then, we will move and work with schools, creating that exceptional experience. Part of creating those exceptional experiences is our Virtual School Choice Expo, which Ms. Pearson mentioned it just a moment ago. We get so much positive feedback from our School Choice Expo—even from last year when we started virtual. We hope that this year, we're evaluating whether we want to move back to brick-and-mortar, or do we want to have a somewhat of a hybrid. But this Virtual School Choice Expo does start on Saturday, January 8, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's also—in preparation for upcoming season, parents may visit the district website, www.duvalschools.org, to learn more about the programs that are available. And also, you can find the School Choice catalog available on our website. In addition to the Virtual School Choice Expo, we will have in-person school tours. So, parents don't think just—if you miss this, this is the end. No, there's more that will follow, and there's more opportunities to find out all that we offer, because it is true—we have that. One of the things that we worked really hard—the board and the superintendent as a team—was the challenge of school renaming last year. And part of the board's requirement was that we had to raise the funding to pay for things that needed to be changed for the school renaming. And so, today, we just want to thank JPEF and all—we're saying all of the donors, because we've had everyone from $10 donation to as high as $50,000 donation. And those really large dollar amount donations—we really have to thank and look to Dr. Kelly Coker-Daniels, who worked very hard with Dr. Pierce in working with JPEF to get those donors to round out. We raised over $200,000. And as you can see, here's an example of one of the areas that—once a school's name was changed, we had to replace the flooring on all of our basketball courts. And I believe that we are just about finished with this project. I think we have one school left. But with that funding, as well as the donations from organizations such as the Jacksonville Jags and the Jumbo Shrimp and other donors who asked to remain anonymous, we did get quite a bit donated to us. So, sports equipment, uniforms—a lot of that was just donated to our secondary schools. So, again, thank you, Dr. Kelly Coker-Daniels, for your efforts. I'm very excited about this—oh, yes. I'm very excited about this last slide. JTA Pilot Ridership Program for—it says for students, but it's for secondary students. JTA has been meeting with the district for quite a while to pilot a program that students can ride on their public transportation for free. This is—this will start January 4 through May 27. It's from Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. All participating students must show a valid school ID to the bus operator upon boarding. They also must follow all COVID guidelines related to public transportation. This is different than when you're riding our buses. JTA can also issue a JTA ID for ridership for students unable to locate their ID cards, but that should not be for DCPS students. They should have their ID cards. This is for all students. It doesn't matter whether you're traditional charter or private, they can use the JTA Pilot Ridership Program for students. We will be sharing this information out with our families. We will put on the website the location—the ridership locations —so that students can figure out, "Hey, is it better for me to catch a JTA bus to school and know that it's still 7:00 p.m.? So, they may still be able to do things after school. They can get—make sure that they show up to the bus on time." It is important to note that adults do have to pay. So, if a parent is with their student, their student is free, but the parent does have to pay. And it is only for middle and high school students. JTA works with the school district in a number of ways, and I'm about to share a video with the STEAM program that we partner with JTA. It is with one particular school, but we have a number of schools that participate with JTA. So, if we could close out this presentation with the video of the JTA STEAM program, and I believe they are at Rufus Payne Elementary School. So, as Chairman Willie shared about our partnerships and how valuable those partnerships, we continue to look for innovative ways to bring our community into our classrooms. As I said, this is just focused on Rufus Payne Elementary School. They are in almost every one of our elementary schools, but we are just very thankful to our businesses, our corporations, and our nonprofit organizations that have made a commitment to step up and support Duval County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Before we move into—we have department reports, no department reports, and no report from the Sales Surtax Oversight Committee this evening. But before we move into public comment, I do want to shift point of privilege, move the students who are here. We have students from our JAGS program. I want them to come forward before—so they can get home to do homework or whatever they need to do. So, I want Elijah— So I want Elijah and Joaquin to come up forward. They are both from Stanton College Preparatory School. So can we give them a, a round of applause as they come forward? They're from our Jacksonville Association of Governing Students. And can you both state your full name and what grade you're in before you, before we begin? Thank you so much, and thanks for being here.
To the Honorable Chairman Darry Willie, the Honorable School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Diana Green, I am Joaquin Raffel Marcelino. They, them, I am a senior at Stanton College Preparatory School and a student governing president.
I am Elijah Files, a senior at Stanton College Preparatory School, he/him, and I am the senior class president. We are here today as delegates from the Jacksonville Association of Governing Students to represent ongoing student concerns over the dress code. JAGS delegates reviewed the 10 provisions specified on pages 49 through 50 of the Student Code of Conduct. Several of the guidelines were necessary to us for safe learning environments. Pardon me. Provisions 3 and 9 aid in prescribing intentional display of sexual body parts and ban weaponizable clothing and jewelry. Provision 6 is paramount in prohibiting hate, hate speech. However, there's a problem with the lack of uniform enforcement. However, we thank you for enforcing these provisions to protect our schools. Concerning the remaining eight enumerations, we are discussing the wording to ensure students with bigger bodies, feminine and non-binary students are fairly treated. Much of the wording also displays disregard for climate, can be left open to misinterpretation and subconscious bias, and arbitrarily prohibits clothing that does not hinder the learning environment but limits expression. In provisions 1 and 7, there is great discussion regarding slippers and head coverings. We concede that footwear with hard bottoms must be worn to prevent feet injury, and head coverings that purposefully serve to cover the eyes must be prohibited to aid in cheating prevention. However, hard-bottom slippers, hats with no bill, hoodie, hoodies, and the like do not pose a threat to learning. Some may say this is to upkeep professional dress, but despite this, students are not exactly expected to wear formal dress. Students come in without repercussion in basketball shorts and pajamas, but regardless of their comfortable dress, learning is not hindered.
In provisions 2, 4, 5, and 8, we respectfully challenge the use of phrases such as disruptive or destructive and vulgar manner. They lead to misinterpretation and unconscious discrimination against feminine, non-binary, and bigger-bodied students. We see that the hot climate of Florida is not fully considered within the Student Code of Conduct. Dressing comfortably allows us to be safe and stay focused in class. Many students, much of whom I know, have succumbed to heat stroke and suffer in human trust rooms because of the dress code. People with bigger bodies are also unfairly targeted in these provisions, as clothing naturally shifts on bigger bodies and will be tighter, affording them unfair attention leading to their stigmatization and hyper-sexualization, leading these students diverting their focus from their studying to worrying about their body, which is seemingly counterintuitive to the purpose of the dress code. We are open to working with the executive, executive director of student discipline in, in crafting specificity of wording, and that more factors should be taken into account before prohibiting, prohibiting certain types of clothing. In provision 10, while we have no opposition to its wording and contents, however, students have expressed, much of them to me, being berated by adults, body-shamed, and sexualized. Furthermore, in some cases, the student's home is very far away, as it takes me one hour to get home to and from Stanton, which creates unnecessary burdens to the, to both students and to parents, which to me is quite detrimental to both, to the students' mental health. However, we thank you for valuing the student perspective and allowing us an opportunity to vet the dress code. We appreciate your hard work in trying to keep our schools safe and providing us a conducive, conductive educational environment in which all students can comfortably grow. We thank you for the time and the honor to be able to speak to you this evening, and we hope that we could work together in progressing towards a more cooperative and brighter future. Thank you.
Excellent. Can we give one more round of applause for Elijah Files and Joaquin Marcelino? Huge round of applause. Broke from Stanton, which is a district. We appreciate you all being here. Thank you so much for, for being here this evening. And we made it a point as a school board to ensure that we had student voice at our meetings. And we, we create and amend policy, but you all experienced those policies. So we want to hear about what you're experiencing, and we saw folks taking notes, and we're, we're going to make sure that we work with you and, and to make sure that happens. So thank you so much. One more round of applause for our students. We will now move on to the public comments portion of this evening. We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of, of you, start, me, starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining when the light turns yellow, and you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. Board policy provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 p.m. Thank you for taking time to address the board. I will now turn it over to Chairwoman Kelly Coker-Dan. How many speakers do we have for this evening?
We have 17 speakers for this evening. We'll start with Wilma Castaneda, followed by Wanda Bonner.
And you can pull that microphone down. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Vertically challenged. Buenas tardes. Good evening, Dr. Green, honorable board members, and guests. My name is Wilma Castaneda. I'm an office assistant at Abbas Park Elementary School. We service our school administrators, teachers, students, and parents. We are the first impression of a school and provide the positive customer service to make Duval County Public Schools the best in the nation. As an office assistant, we are met with different challenges daily. These challenges increased after returning from the COVID lockdown. The school office now has to deal with COVID protocols, including continuing clinical visits, maintaining quarantine rooms, maintaining accurate records for students requiring COVID testing and their results. First, on the behalf of the UOPD unit, let me express our gratitude in the board's consideration in the proposed salary increase. This truly is an expression of your appreciation of your support staff. We appreciate the fact that the board was willing to consider this salary increase, even though we already had a contract in place. Several of my colleagues have expressed how this proposed increase will be a relief in, to their financial stress they have been facing. Some have considered leaving the district or getting a second job in order to make ends meet. Many have started working in the extended day program. This proposed salary increase is coming at a pivotal point with the rising inflation and rates, including gas, food, and housing prices. Some of our employees have had to deal with true financial hardships, includes, including possible evictions, needing to use local food banks, and all while still being employed by DCPS. Many schools are dealing with staffing shortages. This proposed salary increase will allow the district and principals to offer competitive starting salaries that will help alleviate the strain that staffing, that staffing shortages put on a school. Personally, I was able to retain a paraprofessional at our school who had already put in her two-week notice after telling her about the proposed salary increase. Thank you again for your consideration and continued support of all Duval County employees. And have a happy holiday. Felicidades.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. We will now have Wanda Bonner, followed by April Wiseman.
Good evening. My name is Wanda Bonner. I'm an ESC para at Holiday Hill Elementary in the Pride Unit. The Pride Unit is a behavior unit. As you know, and you can read my shirt, paraprofessionals are teachers' heroes. If it wasn't for us, teachers wouldn't make it. We, we should be looked at as more than just a helping hand. The proposed increase that was brought before us, we appreciate it, and we hope more to come, because the job that we do as a paraprofessional is way harder than a teacher. I done got, I got hit, I got punched, I'd have been on work miss comp several times. But I come back each time, regardless of how I feel. Unlike the young lady that had perfect attendance, I don't have perfect attendance, because I'm a little older, so when I get hit and punched, I, you know, I have to stay at home. But I still come back, because I love my job. I love the kids. And I just want you guys to recognize that the paraprofessionals, we do a lot. We work very hard in the school district. And we are not to be just pulled over to the side like we mean nothing. And I would like to thank you for that increase.
Thank you, Ms. Bonner. We'll have April Wiseman now, followed by Sunny Bartley.
Good evening. My name's April Wiseman. I've been a para for 13 years. I'm currently at Alden Road Exceptional Student Center in the autism wing. We are receiving more challenging students, day in and day out. I have had three in the last three years. While having the challenging students, I'm taking behavior data, running small groups, cleaning up the classroom, preparing materials, and making materials for the students to be successful, not only at work, but at home. I think we are going in the right direction on the raise of the minimum wage. The last thing I want to let you know is that the last four years, I've had a brand-new teacher that I've had to walk through now on how to write a zoning plan, the lesson plans, the behavior plans for every student, so that they know what they're walking into the first day of school. Making all the morning meeting books reinforcement pages, just to name a few things. I asked, I was asked to train a new para this year, and it's hard when it, you're the old, like, when there's only two of you in the classroom, and there's six kids, and they're running around. But thank you for the consideration on the increase in salary, and you guys have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. We'll now have Sunny Bartley, followed by Katie Hathaway.
Good evening. My name is Sunny B., Sunny Bartley. Sorry. I never thought I would see the day where the white male would be the most hated in our country, and patriotism would be synonymous to white supremacy. While the black race led by BLM has become the new Karen, news alert, racism comes in all colors. Just because you're black, God does not give you a pass. Let's judge one another by the content of his or her character. I believe MLK would appreciate it. I was living the American dream before the scamdemic shut down the world. America, America gives us all the freedom of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness under the Constitution of the United States, no matter your race, color, creed, nationality, background, which makes me a proud black American of the greatest country in the world. Anyone disagreeing with this notion, I show you the exit door of our nation, and may I suggest the southern border, since the tyrannical Biden regime has it open for the whole world to migrate here illegally. I continue by saying, I am not oppressed by systemic racism, white privilege, white supremacy, or social injustice, and I vehemently disagree with the term CRT, Critical Race Theory, because it teaches us that white people are inherently evil and racist, and black people are weak and pathetic, needing help from the true oppressors killing our country. Wealthy black offended like Colin Kaepernick, Oprah Winfrey, LeBron James, Tyler Perry, Snoop Dogg, Don Lemon, Joy Reid, Alan Jesse, to name a few, and white socialist liberals, the, the modern-day slave master controlling and manipulating the black race through race hustling and race baiting, as the media bullhorn pushes the narrative that America is a, is a racist nation. And any blacks leaving the plantation is labeled as an Uncle Tom and a sellout, because we are not brainwashed by the fake news zombie media apocalypse. Let's talk about fatherlessness, the catalyst for the black community's undoings, like black-on-black murder, teen pregnancy, abortion, domestic violence, crime, drugs, gang violence, incarceration, illiteracy, school dropout. These are all self-inflicted problems from the, problems that the black, that has plagued the black community for decades. However, the most disheartening thing is, these black neighborhoods across the country are represented by mostly black Democratic elected officials, while Republicans sit and watch the atrocities transpire right before their eyes with their finger up their butt. Yet, there is total silence on these vitally important issues just mentioned, but Marxists shove down our throats, CRT, police brutality, social injustice, little boys in dresses, which causes sexual assault cases like Loudoun County in public schools. These political cesspool, the political cesspool on Capitol Hill, pastors cowering in a corner too afraid to stand up to the fake woke mob, disingenuous news coverage, and, and academia has failed the American people, to say the least. Our country has gone to pot. But we, the people, are here to, to take back our, our country.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley.
May God bless America, because we sure do need him now.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley. We'll now have Katie Hathaway, followed by Laura Collins.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, Dr. Green and school board members. It's great to see you again. My name's Katie Hathaway. I'm a mom of two DCPS students who are in fifth and seventh grade. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent after a devastating week for our country, after a deadly school mass shooting, taking the lives of four children at Oxford High School, injuring seven more, and traumatizing an entire school and community for years to come. Before continuing, I want to say the names of the four beautiful lives that were stolen and to honor them. I invite you to say their names with me. Hannah St. Juliana, Tate Mir, Madison Baldwin, and Justin Schilling. Their lives matter. Similar tragedies like last week at Oxford High School have played out again and again in American schools over the past 20 years. We must do whatever we can to stop tragedy on repeat. We have to change our focus from reactive to preventative, and that starts with secure gun storage. You, as a board, have a chance to lead and be proactive. We know that up to 80% of school shooters under the age of 18 got the gun that they used from their home or the homes of friends or relatives. Bottom line, if children can't access a gun, they can't bring one to school and cause devastation. I'm here to ask you, as leaders of our school district, to say, children killing children at school is not okay. This is not normal. And to do everything within your professional power to make sure every child in our school district is safe as possible while at school. Shootings by children can be prevented with secure gun storage. I'm asking you to please pass a resolution, which would require families to be notified on how to store their firearms in the home, which is locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition. The Be Smart Campaign on Secure Gun Storage provides valuable resources, which makes it easy to share with adults. We know that onus is always on adults to keep children safe and to help prevent these senseless tragedies by simply practicing responsible gun ownership. I'm happy to provide more information on the Be Smart program, and you can visit the website, which is besmartforkids.org. Much like sharing safety information with families regarding things like proper seatbelt usage, or wearing a bike helmet, or eating nutritionally, sharing proper gun safety information via the Be Smart Campaign is just even more vital to the safety and well-being of our students, their families, and our community. We, as parents, deserve the freedom to send our children to school to learn and not die. Our children deserve the freedom to live in a world without threats of gun violence, especially while at school. Don't let another tragedy drift into the background and not take the opportunity to do something. If you have the opportunity to save one life, I hope that you will do it. I thank you all so much for your time and leadership, and I just want to say, watching the awards tonight just was, once again, why I love DCPS schools, and our teachers make it so special, and I appreciate the work that you do every day. Appreciate you. Hope you have a great holiday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. We will now have Laura Collins, followed by LaShonda Phelps.
Good evening. My name is Laura Collins, and I'm the mom of two DCPS students who are in the first and third grade at Neptune Beach Elementary. I am following up on the previous comments to echo the same sentiments. As a parent, I am horrified watching what seems to be an endless news cycle of gun violence in schools across the nation. I'm here tonight to ask you to please lead and advocate for all of our children and educate parents in our school district to make, make sure another senseless tragedy does not become a reality. Gun sales soared to record numbers last year, a reported increase of 64%. There are reported 5.4 million children in America now living in homes with guns that are loaded and un- that are loaded and unlocked. The previous speaker mentioned the Be Smart Campaign. This is supported by the National PTA. It is a program to provide the tools necessary to raise awareness and encourage responsible decisions on gun storage. National PTA Board Member Allison Turner was quoted this year saying, "Parents, teachers, and students all know that we're safer when gun owners store their guns safely." That means locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition. She went on to say, "In fact, a 2019 study estimated that if half of households with children switched from leaving their guns unlocked to securely storing them all locked, a third of, a, a, a third of youth gun suicides and unintentional deaths could be prevented, saving an estimated 251 lives in a single year." The Be Smart Program encourages parents and adults to: One, secure guns in homes and vehicles. Two, model responsible behavior around guns. Three, ask about the presence of unsecured guns in other homes. Four, recognize the role of guns in suicide. And five, tell their peers to be smart. I hope the board will consider a resolution tonight which would require the district to educate families on securing firearms in the home to prevent children from accessing them. Thank you for your time and leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. We will now have LaShonda Phelps, followed by Cindy Mead.
Good evening. My name is LaShonda Phelps. I am a support tech currently in the technology division. I've been with Duval County Schools almost 24 years. I've had the opportunity to reach each and every different level of persons in the DTU unit, from clerks at the schools to bookkeepers, mainly because I do a lot with purchasing. I have met a lot of people. And during that time, I can appreciate the effort that they give our schools, the effort that they give our children. My heart is where this all started, was with the children. And we have people who are considered of poverty, and they go every day and give it 110,000% for our children, for our teachers, to support our great school board and our county. So I am speaking on behalf of the board and, and their request to bring us back to bargaining this year. Even though we have a contract, we had it laid out for the $15-an-hour minimum plan over a three-year process, and it's been upped. For those who even serve on the bargaining committee, I can speak to the awe and appreciation. They were in tears and, and just, just appreciative. They actually are thinking of us and the fact that milk costs the same for everybody. JA is going up. We have children in daycare is going up. Rent is going up. And all of these were concerns before we were brought to the bargaining table. So as the first vice president of UOPD for DTU, I was able to tell my constituents, we are an honor-winning team. We, we believe in one voice, one union. So each division of that is being appreciated with this increase because the increase was across the board, and they're already giving 110,000%, so we can stay committed and focused. And with this increase, they can relieve the stress of being in the everyday world and have more joy to continue to serve what we all stand for, the children, and Duval County and its school board and what it represents, because that's our future. So I want to thank you on behalf of my constituents and all of those that are under DTU and those that are not, because they are still blessed by you taking us into account and appreciating our hard work and, and knowing that it's, everybody's not serving on the same dime. So we all need to be appreciated. So I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. We will now have Cindy Mead, followed by Cindy Watson.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Mead, pronouns she/her. I am a lifelong resident of the Jacksonville Beach area. I have a 15-year-old daughter who attends Fletcher High School, the same high school that both her father and I attended years ago. My mother also attended Fletcher as a student and worked there as the head librarian. Fletcher is beloved by our family and the beaches as a whole. So I was thrilled when it came time for my daughter to attend. My daughter happens to be a member of the LGBTQ community. I had to wake up early this morning to attend a meeting in the dean's office at 6:45. This is not how I like starting my day, but my family had no choice. Yesterday, my daughter was targeted again by fellow Fletcher students driving by in their truck on her way home from school. Once again, the truck slowed and its windows rolled down as the students inside yelled obscenities at her. Again and again, she's been called names that are too vulgar for me to repeat here. This behavior has become a pattern, and my fear is that the situation may escalate into violence. No child should have to feel unsafe and belittled on their walk home from school. This type of harassment also occurs in the classroom. My daughter has been called a freak in front of other students and has been asked, "What are you?" This is dehumanizing and demoralizing. It breaks my heart that she has to find the courage to attend school every day only to worry about her safety on her walk home. How should educators handle situations like this? The Duval County School System has had guidelines in place for over a decade that informs teachers and staff on how to best support LGBTQ students around issues related to coming out, bullying, harassment, and more. My family supports these policies, and I encourage the school board to maintain the current guidance, which was recently reprinted. LGBTQ students are more likely to experience a number of health risks at significantly higher rates than their peers. Like my daughter, LGBTQ students were found to be more likely to experience harassment, bullying, and feeling endangered at school. It is no surprise that these students report experiencing suicidal thoughts at higher rates than their peers. As educators and parents, we have a moral responsibility to protect and support these children. No child should feel threatened at their own school just because of who they are. It is imperative that a safe space is maintained at every public school for students who need someone to talk to. Luckily, luckily, there is such a space for my daughter, and the school is working to handle her situation before it escalates. But that is not enough. I urge you to protect and preserve the policies that are designed to keep LGBTQ students safer. One of the strategic priorities and guiding principles of ACHIEVE 26 mentioned earlier is culture and climate. Please do everything you can to ensure that all of our kids feel valued and safe in our schools. Every student, every day.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now have Cindy Watson, followed by Wells Todd.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Watson, CEO of Jasmine. Jasmine is the LGBTQ Youth Center in Jacksonville, and we've been providing support and advocacy for LGBTQ young people in northeast Florida since 1994. We've been a partner with Duval County Public Schools in expanding safe and supporting environments that are LGBTQ-affirming since 2012, when we joined a collaboration to support the health of young people through a CDC DASH grant. Under this grant in 2009, the, the school system and the Department of Health in Duval County worked together on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or YRBS. This is a national survey of middle and high school students conducted every other year here to track student safety and health behaviors and risks of bullying and violence. In 2013, 9.4% of your students identified as lesbian, gay, bisexual. With each survey, this number has grown. So in 2019, 18.7% of high school students described themselves as gay, lesbian, or bisexual, almost doubling in six years. Additional students reported same-sex partners, and the combined number of those students who either identified as LGB or had same-sex partners totaled 23.9%. That's almost 24% of Duval County high school students who self-reported as sexual minority students. We don't yet have data on transgender students and that kind of gender diversity, but around the country, about at least 2% of high school students are beginning to identify as transgender. So what's really troubling about the YRBS data is that LGBT students, like Ms. Mead's daughter, report higher rates of bullying, teasing, and name-calling than their heterosexual peers, sometimes at double and triple the rate. In fact, in 2019, 30% of LGBT students did not go to school because they felt unsafe compared to 18% of their heterosexual peers. And 22% of these students reported being threatened or injured with a weapon on school property. It should come as no surprise that the mental well-being of the students is impacted with 62% of LGBT students reporting depression, twice the rate of their heterosexual peers, and 30% reporting suicide. So altogether, this is really significant and has to be faced. To your credit, Duval County Schools has been building programs and policies and practices to enhance students' experiences of acceptance and safety for several years. GSA Clubs create a school climate of safety. The All-In for Safe Schools badges worn by school personnel signal to students that there's someone safe and caring in their midst. And the LGBTQ Student Support Guide directs personnel in best practices and helps them navigate complex situations and provide resources to students to keep them safe in school. And then your professional development is really expanding for school personnel on these topics.
Thank you.
So keep up that work.
Thank you. We will now have Wells Todd, followed by Jimmy Midyet.
Good evening. I just want to thank you for this year's hard work that you all did. Things had to be done, and you came through and you did them. You are under attack. Many school boards across this country are under attack. I am with an organization called Take 'Em Down. When I come before you, you know that I just speak to the facts. Right-wing extremist movement that is being funded by the Koch family and the American Legislative Exchange Council continues to attack public education. From fighting mask mandates to attacking Black history, where they are demanding books be burnt that are written by Black authors. This movement must be confronted. The Florida Department of Education has removed an anti-bullying, bullying portal from its website, which includes links to LGBTQ advocacy groups. The LGBTQ community must be supported and protected by our public institutions of learning. Another point, we must have sensible gun laws. How many more attacks? How many more young people? How many more children have to die? You guys have a lot of work in front of you. It's not an easy task to be on a school board. I wouldn't want your job. But these questions and these topics and this struggle must be confronted. I want to say in closing, the communities out there behind you, believe me, we are. I want to thank you again for your hard work, and I want to wish you a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. We'll now have Jimmy Midyet, followed by Dan Merken.
Good evening, board members. I'm Jimmy Midyet. I live on the West Side. Congratulations to the, the new board chair and to the vice chair. Very, very nice. And wow, Elijah and Joaquin, that, those, those young people really, really make me feel good about being a graduate of the Duval County School Board system myself back in the day. I started my education career here at Mamie Agnes Jones Elementary, way out in Baldwin, and then finished at Baldwin Middle Senior High School. Go Big Red. And I've lived and worked and advocated in Jacksonville for my entire life, specifically for the community to which I belong, the LGBTQ community. And so I've become aware of recent hullabaloo, whatever, bubbling up from the community about the existing policies that the Duval County School Board adopted over a decade ago. Things are going great. I mean, they have been so far. I don't know what the, what the new impetus is for this concern. I know the political branches of government like to play football with this issue. We have this president in Washington and, or this governor in Tallahassee, and things shift around. And that's why I feel much more comfortable in the law, because the law is unchanging and is good. Over the years since this board passed really great policies, the legal position of LGBT students have only gotten better. In June 20, 20, about a year and a half ago, the Supreme Court in Bostock v. Clayton County determined that, and I'll quote from the court, "It's impossible to discriminate against a person based on their sexual orientation or gender identity without discriminating against that person based on their sex." You all are professionals. You know that that feeds directly into Title IX, and here we all are. Just last year, or earlier this year, in Grimm v. Gloucester, I can't say those words, Gloucester County, I think, Little County in Virginia, Virginia County made it harder for transgender students to have educational success in their schools. Ultimately, they were sued by the student Gavin Grimm, who prevailed ultimately, and the Supreme Court allowed his rights to persist. I could give you more cases, and that's unnecessary. But I'll say this, this school board, your predecessors were ahead of their time, its time, when you adopted these excellent policies. You have only been vindicated as time has gone on, and it's important to know that you've been vindicated by courts at all levels. Please leave in place your wonderful policies that you have adopted and be very thoughtful about this, because there are many students in our schools today who are just like I was a long, long time ago. Perhaps scared, perhaps confused, perhaps talking to a, a school member who could help. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We'll now have Dan Merken, followed by Trinity Baker.
Hello. Dan Merken, I live in Murray Hill. I've been working with the LGBTQ youth community for over 20 years and also have a background in HIV prevention planning. So I came today to speak in favor of the existing policies that you already put out in your guidance. I think that guidance is really well-thought-out. I've been able to read through it. And, and I know, you know, it's a practice sometimes to, to take things down and look at them and to make sure that they're up to date. And after looking at it, I thought that it was really a, a solid document with good recommendations on how to, to practice supporting LGBTQ youth. I know that there have been some in previous meetings that might have come up and spoke about the recently passed Parental Bill of Rights that was passed in Tallahassee earlier this year. Having looked at that legislation, it did not really establish any new parental rights. What it did was sort of pull all the existing parental rights together and put it in one place. So having said that, there's really nothing new there as it impacts LGBT youth. So the policies that you have in place in terms of the guidance are actually fine. And they were written with the influence of federal and state law and looked good. So I wanted to say that it's really important to do that. And, you know, other folks have spoken to the statistics, you know. It's really critical that we do support LGBT young people because of all the different things that they face, just because of who they are. Based on the YRBS data, we know that a significant population of the students here identify as LGB, and we also know that they experience risk behavior factors at much significant rates compared to their heterosexual peers. On over 60 data points, I think there was a significant difference between LGB youth and their heterosexual peers, and that's extraordinary. And those are the data points about, you know, suicidal ideation and feeling threatened at school. at school, and carrying a weapon in self-defense, and those types of data points. So it's really something that, you know, these guidelines are essential in order for us to address those things. Secondly, I wanted to speak in favor of those wonderful clinics that the schools have, where it allows young people access to sexual health information and testing. I think those are really, really critical. I know some people have spoken about that, that, you know, they think parents should be informed, and that, let me tell you that legally in all fifty states, young people under the age of eighteen can consent to get tested for STIs and HIV. That's the law in all fifty states. Every state has adopted different standards. Some have put a lower end on the age. For instance, in Florida, the age is thirteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Trinity Baker, followed by Katie McNeil.
Hello. I'm Trinity Baker, Student Support Coordinator at Jasmine. As Cindy said, according to the 2019 Duval County Youth Risk Behavior Survey, eighteen point seven percent of high school students self-identified as lesbian, gay, or bisexual; another five point seven were unsure. Percentages of students identifying as trans were not polled at that time. The LGBTQ population within the Duval County School District is significant, and their rights and protections should be maintained. LGBTQ students were found to be more likely to experience bullying, harassment, not feeling safe at school, just for being perceived as gay. Not surprisingly, these students also reported experiencing suicidal thoughts at higher rates than their non-LGBTQ peers. Through my work at Jasmine and in schools, I've had the personal experience of hearing from supportive parents, families, and young people who are navigating the school system. You just met one of those parents and her experience. School does not always feel like a safe place for these students or their families. These protections give them the comfort that teachers and administrators are working to create a culture that ensures their safety and values them as individuals. For teachers, having specific guidance educating them on the best practices to support students is invaluable. Knowing that school is a safe place to be your authentic self is very important to keep young people thriving and engaged in their education. Continuing these trainings for teachers keeps their classrooms evolving towards equity for all students. The Duval County School System has had guidance in place for over a decade that informs teachers and staff on how best to support LGBT students around issues related to coming out, bullying, harassment, and everything else. I support these policies and encourage the school board to maintain the current guidance, which was reprinted earlier this year. Young people have few spaces to feel safe and seen. I encourage you to continue your efforts to shift our school culture to where every student can feel affirmed in their identity and safe to be themselves, every student, every day. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Katie McNeil, followed by Alira Peterson.
Hi, my name is Katie McNeil, and I want to say that I think some of these initiatives that you guys have brought up are really good. Soft skills are definitely something that we need to teach more of. As someone who hires, I find a lot of people, especially young people just coming out of college, lack these skills. Some things that I would recommend focusing on are learning how to think, not what to think, concise and clear writing, specifically business communication, understanding budgets and how to balance them, giving and receiving feedback in a calm manner, and being open to getting feedback without getting too emotional, and learning that it's okay to make mistakes as long as you learn from them. I also think vocational training is a great thing to add. Not everyone needs to go to college. There are a lot of jobs out there that are in demand that pay a lot of money, like plumbing, HVAC, programming, and electricians. I think apprenticeships and shadowing on the job would be really great experiences for high school students. I also think that this culture of service is a great idea, and having that service mentality and wanting to help people is a much better way to approach customer service. So I really like that. With all these good things having been said, the matter behind the masking is not over, and I just think that with the communicable disease policies that are up for discussion today, cases have gone down because of seasonality, not because of masking, and we saw that cases have gone down while mask mandates were removed. That doesn't mean that wearing masks or not wearing masks had any impact on cases, and I think we really need to acknowledge that. But the logic that's been shown in the past here is when the mask mandate was instituted, cases went down. There is no correlation between those things. I really want you guys to acknowledge that. I don't know why there's still a mask-required sign out front. Many of you are no longer wearing masks, so obviously they are not required. I would encourage you to take that sign down and stop having that. I don't like the fact that the board ceded authority over to the superintendent for making policies. I feel like that was a cowardly move to remove criticism from you guys and cede all that authority in one person who is not elected. The guidelines for the creation of policies mention specifically airborne viruses. They're not, you cannot stop the spread of airborne viruses. They're spread by breathing, so it would just be creation of policies that damage for no benefit. There's no call-out for inviting experts with contrary points of view. I think that needs to be added in as a requirement, because as we saw what happened is you just have someone that confirms your existing bias. There's no one to question and probe the experts that conform your bias without that. We cannot have the checks and balances we need to make sure that we get good recommendations. And I'd like to remind the superintendent that the Parents' Bill of Rights have just been strengthened, and you likely have no legal authority to attempt any mitigation policies anyways. The Florida Department of Health will likely issue guidelines, and to find them will just open up Duval to more needless and costly litigation. You've already lost.
Thank you. We'll now have Alira Peterson, followed by Cornell Oliver.
Hello, I'm Alira Peterson, and I'm here to speak regarding the drafts that were proposed for the communicable disease policy. In reviewing the changes to Chapter Five, which speaks to those policies and procedures around communicable diseases, I was surprised to see that a large portion of the original document, specifically pertaining to HIV and AIDS, was scrapped. I bring this up because in the original document, one of the items pertaining to that that I found to be of specific interest was that students and employees with HIV weren't required to disclose that information to school personnel. It was considered protected and private information, even though it's a permanent condition that does pose a potential risk of spread. And yet, it seems that with the revised document, the district wants to incorporate reporting of cases for other temporary recoverable communicable diseases such as coronaviruses. Obviously, it does include COVID, but among it also includes things like the common cold. In addition to scrapping all mentions of HIV and AIDS, I found it odd that the revised document is missing, missing mention of hepatitis A and B and chickenpox. So I'm curious as to what rubric was applied to determine which communicable diseases were important enough to be named in the document. I'm also concerned that the procedures being developed and recommended in conjunction with this new policy will not be made by examining multiple points of view from experts in the medical or public health agencies listed, but will instead be made relying solely on experts that coincide with and/or reinforce the personal opinions of the superintendent or the board, as we saw previously with the decisions made regarding the supposed efficacy of masks as it relates to stopping or stalling the spread of COVID-19. Despite requests from a number of parents who sought to have a more diverse and balanced representation from the medical field, only one point of view was considered. I'm also disappointed that the board ceded the responsibility for drafting or revising this policy to the superintendent, and that the current version as it stands doesn't seek to provide the least restrictive environment for students, but instead seeks to find more avenues for requiring reporting and controls that require students and parents to prove in some capacity that they are safe and healthy enough to come to school. Knowing that this policy has also been updated to specifically focus on communicable diseases during an epidemic or a pandemic, I'm unclear on Duval County Public Schools' plan or policy for communicable diseases outside of an epidemic/pandemic scenario, or if the expectation is instead that we are now forever in an epidemic/pandemic state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We will now have Cornell Oliver, followed by Darlene Miller.
Yes, Cornell Oliver. Address is on file. Fundamentally, one of the things I want to bring to your attention is that this whole conversation about teachers and people who serve our community have an unnecessary debt when they are the building blocks to our young people. Vice Chairwoman Corcoran, I know that Bernard Priestley Jackson is probably the liaison for the school system. And one of the things, maybe we can do a matching program where we can help pay off schoolteachers' debt. A minimum standard could be something, maybe five years of public school service. Because the thing about it is naturally, when I hear stuff, I don't never come in here with a game plan, because I want to hear what people got to say. And if it has any merit or any value, I'm going to follow the line to see what can be done to make it happen. Number two, there was a big argument at city council about a community right there in Lake Forest. I got a lot of heartburn. I heard a lot of residents. They point fingers at you, and then I pointed fingers at the councilwoman that represents that area. Now, I'm not through bashing her, because she ain't been representing that community where she should. But one of the things I want to discuss with y'all is send out a basic postcard explaining some of the things that y'all are going to be doing in your individual districts, like dealing with these closing of old schools. Make the public more aware. They're not going to be able to come to your website or look at public notices. But I don't like to see a lot of friction in our community when people just not really, you don't expect people to be knowledgeable. Sometimes you got to bring everybody there, everything they want, right to their front desk. So if a notice could be put out, especially dealing with the, dealing with those closing of those schools, I want our community to really be involved in that, especially in the predominantly inner city of our communities. You know, that's a priority for me. I don't know what your budget looks like, but if you can get postcards sent out for that on a quarterly basis or every month, letting them know what's going on in their individual district representation, that's clear, that's clear transparency. And that means that when they come to you, they could be more aware and they can be more engaging with y'all. And project number three for me, dealing with y'all, in some way, in some, in some shape and form, we got to get some better, we got to get these same quality pin, these same quality teachers in the suburban communities.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now have Darlene Miller.
Good evening. Just yesterday, I was trying to guide another parent through your agenda. And when you look at the agenda, you know, it's a lot on your agenda. And one of the questions was, well, they just get presented with this, and they just vote on all of this? What is all of this? And, you know, I was, I've been around for, what, five or six years now? And I was trying to explain it to them, and you go through your workshops, and you have your board workshops, and you go, and then you talk about all this, and you know what you're voting on. And I was going to the school board website with my husband, trying to find out, you know, exactly how to tell this other parent how to get to the workshop notes. Well, they're not, to find out yesterday, they're not actually there. It's, there's no recording of your workshops anymore. Apparently, it's all public records requests now. You know, I can understand you want to keep, like, all of those up or on there. Maybe you just don't have enough space or whatever, but by the time you do a publics' records request, by the time you pay for it, by the time, and I've done public records requests, and get it back, your meeting is over for the next month. So many people don't know what you have discussed on these agenda items. So my recommendation would be, maybe when you do your workshops, at least keep recordings up until after your school board meeting. And if people want to go back further than that, then you can do your publics', you know, records request. But, you know, how, I don't know exactly how long it is between your workshop and your meeting on your agenda. But I can tell you, it's not going to be long enough for the parents to get a public records request, just so they could go through, okay, well, they were talking about this. And I think at some of your school board meetings, parents were angry about things, and had they had knowledge about what you discussed beforehand, they might not have been so angry. Just a thought on that one, and try to keep everything nice, clear, and open to the parents. And make it easy for them to find, make it easy for them to find, they ask, you know, what's in our curriculum? Make it easier to find, because I've had some issues with the curriculum that kind of hit me in the face, or the books my child was reading was not appropriate for him, and I had no clue that he was going to be reading those in class. And if y'all were around back then, I'm not going to rehash the incident with the three whores and all that that came up in an assignment, but, you know, just be more open with people. And another little note, apparently, there's a lot of teachers in this county that can't get working projectors. I thought I'd just put that out there really fast, because I was just on social media and discovered there's actually a lot of them. So.
Thank you. Chairperson Willie, that concludes our speakers for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll move on to comments from parent organizations. I'll ask if you have any organizations that are here, if you would come forward. I don't think I see any, but I did get a note from our Duval County PTA, President Kay Hawkins. She's, her mother passed away, so she's been out for a little while, but she sent this note, a report to the board that we're continuing to reorganize new PTAs at school, where there have not been some in the past. We'll begin our Student Leadership Academy this Saturday, December 11th, and we'll complete it in February. And they would like to wish all of the school board a happy holiday season, and joy and peace throughout the coming year. And that is from Kay Hawkins. All right, now we'll move on. We had our JAG speakers, and now we'll move on to comments from employee organizations. So if we have any employee organizations that would like to address the board? I see Ms. Terri Brady coming forward.
Good evening. I know a lot of you've missed me. Not really, but only because I couldn't come when we were in the middle of negotiations. But I'd like to just say good evening and congratulations to the newly-elected chair and vice chair. I stand before you this evening to acknowledge the achievement of the para and the UOPD bargaining teams, and the school board, and the school board bargaining teams, and our leadership of this district, with the ability to reach the fifteen dollar an hour rate this year. Two years before the law requires it to be enacted. Thank you very much. In addition, additional dollars were spread across the entire salary schedule, so all our support employees received additional hourly increases. These men and women are the backbone for the work that is done daily to keep our district running smoothly and lending support at the schoolwork sites. This is a great start to improving the quality of life for these individuals and their families. I am hopeful that this board and the district leadership will continue to value and financially support these units in the near future. We at DTU understand that the governor and the Florida Legislature did not allocate dollars for any of these individuals that each of you had deemed a priority. But you made it a priority to allocate resources to show value and to show respect for the work that they do every single day. And for that, as president of DTU, I thank each and every one of you for making them a priority. The teacher contract was a long process. That's why I haven't been standing before you until tonight. Again, the governor and the Florida Legislature proved their lack of respect and value to the majority of our instructional group by only allocating dollars from COVID relief monies to a certain, I'm putting in quotes, "certain group" of classroom teachers as defined by them, relief monies, so they did not get the thousand dollars, leaving a thousand eighty of our teachers without anything. Last May, DTU made an official request to bargain money for those individuals who were excluded by the Tallahassee elected officials. We know how tough it was to find non-reoccurring revenue to pay these individuals who were excluded, but it was the correct thing to do, and now they have their money, thanks to the priority that each of you as a board member made and our leadership of our superintendent. Thank you so very much. The salary schedule now was a tough, was a little tougher situation, because we had to work with a grandfather's salary schedule and a performance salary schedule. Also at DTU, we had certain va- Also at DTU, we had certain values that we wanted to hold tight to maintain the integrity and the value of years of experience and of course equity for pay across the board. Through our bargaining process, an agreement was reached and ratified by our members, and this agreement is before you tonight for final approval. The report of severe staffing shortages in our schools and our entire district workforce just keeps on coming. It is easy to assume that this is all due to COVID, but in truth, severe shortages of teachers and support staff were a pre-existing condition. Once COVID fades, our district will continue to be weakened by teacher and support staff shortages that have a direct impact, ladies and gentlemen, on our students and our district as a whole. The shortage problem needs to be solved. The good news, and excuse me, I might want to add, I'm sure our HR department would add kudos to that three, four, and five times over, that, that the shortage problem needs to be solved. The good news for state lawmakers and officials, there's a very simple fix that will make it easier to recruit and retain our teachers and education support professionals that our students need every single day to work with them. The first and most obvious fix is to pay teachers and education support professionals the fair and competitive salaries that they deserve. Despite efforts over the past two years to increase teacher pay, that is not currently the case for our teachers nor our support professionals. Florida has seen approximately a 4.5% increase in students and a 5% increase in staff and a 5% decrease in funds for salaries as adjusted for inflation. Even the governor's boost to the teacher pay, there is about a seven hundred and fifty million dollars less for teacher salaries now than there was fifteen years ago. Fifteen years ago. The push by the governor to increase teacher pay is much appreciated, but it ended up being lopsided effort focused on pay for the beginning teachers. That left highly qualified, experienced educators making the same or kind of close to the same as a first-year hire. And I want to make sure we please note that when the term educator is used by us at DTU, it includes our academic specialists, our ESE specialists, our SLPs, which is speech and language pathologists, our OTs and PTs, psychologists, deans, counselors, academic coaches in school, social workers, and many others that we represent. While Florida ranking for beginning teacher pay has improved nationwide, our teacher overall pay are still the lowest in the nation. We rank forty-eighth in average pay as a state. Wages also rank near the bottom in this nation for our school-related personnel. Since our elected officials in Tallahassee do not seem to be able to fix this recruitment and retention problem, I know that it is time that we in Duval County push for a referendum to generate revenue for all our employees in this district. We are the only urban district in the state of Florida not including all the medium and small counties that have passed referendums and renewal referendums like this in order to fund their employees. When people in the state come to us and say that other districts pay more than we pay our teachers, my answer is very simply, you're correct, they do. It's because they took a bold step to fix the inequities of the employee pay that the Florida legislature refused to address. Working conditions are the second biggest factor in keeping our employees. All our employees want is to be respected as professionals, whether they're teachers or support professionals. Whether they cook our meals, clean our classrooms, drive our buses, hold the hand of a student in a pride unit, or just be there to greet them every morning when they're off the bus. The district needs to do the same and to demonstrate that commitment every single day. Not just in email and not just in a discussion, but in action every single day. The problems cannot be fixed overnight, ladies and gentlemen, but they can be solved, and I believe that sincerely in my heart. However, through sustained, good faith efforts like these contracts tonight and the respect that each of you and our superintendent has shown these employees in this district, we can do what is right for all of our educators. We at DTU stand ready to assist and help in any way. And I want to say I'm glad to be back to share with you the messages of our district and our employees. Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brady. Do we have any other employee organizations that are out there wishing to speak to the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. That the Duval County School Board approved the minutes of the meetings listed in the agenda item. August ninth, two thousand twenty-one, board workshop. August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, emergency meeting. August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, policy handbook review committee. September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, regular board meeting. September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, special committee meeting. September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, board workshop. September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, policy handbook review. October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, special committee meeting. October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, board workshop. October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, board workshop. October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, special board meeting, student expulsion hearing. October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, special board meeting. October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, committee meeting. November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, annual organizational meeting. November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, leasing corporation organizational meeting. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by board member Anderson, second by board member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have passed, you have approved this, seven, zero. Now moving on to approval of consent agenda. Before we move on, are there any items to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Hearing or seeing none, ask for a motion.
So moved, second.
So moved by board member Anderson, second by board member Hershey. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have passed this, item seven, zero. Now moving on to our first public hearing, operations, facilities, project design, construction, and maintenance. Public hearing and vote to adopt the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, five-year district facilities work plan. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board approve the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, five-year district facility work plan.
All right, well, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by board member Anderson, second by board member Hershey. Is there any board members wishing to, to speak? All right, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this, item seven, zero. Moving on, chief of staff, second public hearing, and vote revision to chapter seven, board policy. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policy in school board manual, chapter seven. Policy seven point seven zero, purchasing.
All right, now opening the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by board member Anderson, second by vice chair Coker. Any board members wishing to speak? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this, item seven, zero. Moving on, public hearing and vote, revision to chapter eight, board policy. Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policies in school board manual, chapter eight. Number one, policy eight point one two, school police. Number two, policy eight point four two, general food service requirements.
Thank you. Now opening the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by board member Jones, second by board member Pearson. Is there any board members wishing to speak? Hearing is seeing none, ask for your vote. By your action, you have approved this, item seven, zero. Moving on, public hearing and vote revisions to chapter five, board policies. Uh, Dr. Green, can you read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policy in school board manual, chapter five. Policy five point six four, control of communicable diseases during an epidemic or pandemic.
Now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? As you come forward, just state your name.
My name is Katie McNeil, and I just want to again address this issue that I do not think that the board should have ceded authority to the superintendent to have the ability to come up with these policies. Do nothing is also a policy that you can implement. We already get guidance from the Florida Department of Education and Florida Department of Health. I think we've seen the folly of this board and superintendent trying to control diseases that you cannot control. We need less power grabbing from this organization, not more. It also seems like in part of this, you're trying to have the ability to deny access to parents and community members, to schools and this building by having the ability to set requirements and then deeming the, let's see. If the procedures that you determine to be followed or not followed, that you can, if we refuse to comply, make us leave. So I'm wondering if your intention is like for this past pandemic, that if we did not wear a mask, that we cannot come here and share our opinions, which you weren't allowed to do this time around. I don't know what the law is in the state of Florida and with the executive order that Governor DeSantis had passed, if you would have been allowed to supersede this. But I don't want to have to go back to court and litigate this kind of stuff, so I just really encourage you to not try to manage things that you have no control over anyways. Just being seen to do something seems to be what government likes to do, regardless of whether that something has any positive impact whatsoever. There's a lot of harm done with the masking policy for no benefit. And I don't want to see this stuff happening again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Board chair, I'm, I'm sorry, may I speak? I, I just wanted to say pursuant to two point two six, this particular public hearing is about the deletion of the language regarding bloodborne illnesses and not, you know, generally the procedures. And so normally, when you speak at a public hearing, it's to be on the comment that the hearing's about, and I just wanted to be clear what this portion of the, the meeting was about.
Correct. Thank you. Seeing no more public speakers, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes, question.
We have to.
We gotta move it first.
Don't we have to move it before you have a question?
Yeah, let's move it. So moved by board member Jones, second by board member Hershey. Is there any members who wish to speak? Or member Anderson?
Thanks. I just, to your point, Ms. Mayor's, we today are looking at striking language, which we had some ample conversation about related to this policy prior to its approval at a previous meeting. Can you talk a little bit more about why we're making this move today to strike this particular language?
Sure, I don't, to Board Chair Anderson, it, it's certainly not that the board does not believe that the information that's being deleted is important. It is covered in another location. It's covered in our school health, um, school health manual. Some of the language based on the medical knowledge that we have now was outdated as that part of the policy was passed a long time ago. If the language had been retained, it would not have been in the pandemic epidemic policy. It would have been in a different policy. But everybody believed that those issues were already covered in other areas and did not need to be pursuant to a policy, but it certainly didn't take away any, any rights or delete any of the things that we provide anyone suffering from these illnesses.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the good of the public. I also wanted to delineate between what this policy is, policy five point six four, control of communicable diseases during an epidemic or pandemic, and what we approved earlier today on the consent agenda, which are the procedures that we asked the superintendent to bring forward based on this policy. So these two items go hand in hand. One does not supersede the other. We have not delegated authority to the superintendent that is not due to her in operating her schools in the school district. And so I just wanted to be clear because some of those statements were made and to provide clarification if there needs to be any for the good of the community in the distinction between what is policy and what is the procedures that were brought forward tonight that have been approved by the board.
Thank you, board member Anderson. Board member Hershey?
I'd like to add to what board member Anderson pointed out, and I appreciate her. I think it's time like this that it's good for clarification, especially when we've heard from the, the public and there's been a lot of public input and concern on this topic over the past several months. And just wanted to reiterate that the, I know this isn't exactly what we're talking about in this policy, but just for clarifying purposes that the superintendent always brings a recommendation to the board and then the board approves it or, or doesn't approve it, depending. And so I just want to clarify that. So it's not giving again authority or extra authority to, to the superintendent. And the other thing is, and I realize we're just talking about the, the deletion and changing, but there was some, some comments made during public comment and also for, for this particular item. But while we're on this topic, through the chair and Ms. Mayor's, could you also just reiterate how state law and federal law impacts whatever we have in, in policy?
Correct. So on the consent agenda tonight, the board approved the procedures recommended by the superintendent and those procedures were recommended and approved by the board based on, in part, the superintendent's consultation with the advisory team. That was part of policy five point six four that was passed, which involved a parent, involved health experts, involved a doctor, and involved, you know, various people. So regardless of what the recommendation by the superintendent and the board was, our law, as we know, is ever-changing. We have new legislation as of a couple of weeks ago. And what we're doing is basically expressing our intent on what we think is appropriate to keep children safe during an epidemic and a pandemic. But of course, we are not the legislature, and so we are not a judge. So to the extent that there is a law setting forth different guidelines, we will be following the law. And you'll see in the administrative procedures, it talks about local, state, federal law, or any relevant court orders.
Thank you. I just think that when the public speaks to us and there's some issues or items that are unclear, this is a good time for us to iron out those details and make the public aware of maybe some misconceptions that, that, that may exist. So thank you for that.
Thank you, board member Hershey. Other thoughts or comments? All right, hearing is seeing none, I'll call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this, item seven, zero. Now moving on to board member travel, there is none. Moving on to superintendent travel, there is none. Moving on to for the record. So we will start with board member Joyce.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Excellent. Then we'll move on to board member Pearson.
Mine's a little longer than board member Joyce's. I wanted to say again, thank you to Pine Forest and Principal Matthews for presenting tonight and remind everyone that they are located in District Three Mid-County in Convenient from I-95, if that's what you want for an option. Also, I wanted to say congratulations to Sandalwood High School, Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, and Samuel Wolfson School for Advanced Studies for being recognized by U.S. News and World Report as among the best in the nation, and proud to have them in District Three as well. I had the opportunity, as did several other Board Members, and I thank you for your support, and Dr. Green, to attend a Bridge to Employment launch, program launch at Inglewood High School. And that is a business partnership with Johnson &amp; Johnson Vision, Florida State College at Jacksonville, and Communities and Schools. And what this program is, it encourages students to imagine a world of possibilities for their futures. They have mentors from Johnson &amp; Johnson who will help them, and they will be getting job skills and exploring. This is a, an international program, and if I remember correctly, we are the first in the state of Florida have this program at Inglewood High School. Approximately forty students, starting in the class sophomore to senior year. I also wanted to give an update on the FSBA Conference in Tampa. That was travel that we approved, I think at the last meeting. And I wanted to give an update on some of the business and then also let you know about some of the education sessions that I benefited from. So on the first day of the meeting, Florida School Board Association voted to withdraw from the National School Board Association, and there was, so what that means is we are no longer able to take advantage or participate in training or conferences from the National School Board Association. And so there was some, a lot of discussion about my attendance for, for the Advocacy Institute that NSBA was sponsoring in Washington, D.C. And I had said that as soon as, as FSBA withdrew, I would withdraw, and so I texted, the vote happened and I texted and, and asked our office staff to withdraw me. So I have been withdrawn from the Advocacy Institute. However, I have signed up for the Advocacy Institute Day in the Legislature that FSBA is, is hosting in Tallahassee, and will be there representing our students and our staff, and was able to make a presentation with our Duval delegation, talking about our legislative priorities there. So the education sessions that I went to focused on student achievement and supporting staff. And already, I've been able to share some of what I've learned and some of the ideas with the staff in my District Three schools. So it's, I've completed one year on the Board, and I'm going to say it's now my practice, this is the second year, to visit all twenty-two of the District Three schools in the time between Thanksgiving and when we break for Christmas break. So I have visited seven schools so far, and I have fourteen more to go by next Friday. And it has been my pleasure to talk with them. One of the things I learned from a panel that we had at FSBA host with administrators was some suggestions on what to ask when you go in to visit. And so I've been walking into my schools with two questions. How are you doing? And how can I support you? And those two questions have generated an hour-long conversation with principals at my schools, and, and I will be sharing, I, I've been able to share ideas and programs that I've gotten from meetings in the community and also ideas from FSBA. And then I will be sharing the results, and I've already started sending some emails to staff about what I'm learning, and I have some other ideas that I told Dr. Green earlier that I would share with her, and I think she's so excited to hear about these ideas. But I'm going to volunteer to help. I'll just say that. And then I wanted to close again with a commercial for the School Choice Expo because I think it is important that one of the speakers said that we're transparent and our people in our districts know what's going on, and I feel very strongly after, again, talking with people in the community who don't understand all the options they have for school and, and how it all works. And so we have an opportunity for people to learn how it all works, and there's a great catalog. I hope that you're, okay, so when you get the catalog, there's, it'll have the school listed, and then it'll have all the options for that school. It's such a valuable resource. And so the applications for our high school accelerated programs are already open on the Parent Focus Portal, and I've already, I've already completed mine and submitted mine for my eighth grader. So that's done. But parents have the opportunity to do that through January twentieth, and if you would like to visit a high school, go to their website and look for their tour dates because they have them. And the applications for the other magnet programs will become open on January first, and those are due on February twenty-eighth. So high school acceleration due January twentieth, the other magnet programs due February twenty-eighth. A great way to find out about all these programs is the School Choice Expo on January eighth from eleven to three. It's virtual again this year. If you want to sign up or learn how to navigate, which it was a lot easier than I thought it was going to be last year when I did it, you just kind of pop into rooms, but you can set up your whole program in advance so that when, you can maximize your time. And you can do that on www.duvalschools.org. There's a banner that says, Get Ready to Enroll, and you click on that, and then you can access the whole system. And with that, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. So informative. Next, we'll move on to Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, congratulations on your first meeting as the chairman. You did a great job. We appreciate that. You moved everything along. And I know Dr. Green loves for us to go to these conferences because then she sees all these emails coming at her. What about this, Dr. Green? This, this is what they're doing in another county, so. Also, I also want to echo Board Member Pearson's Bridge to Employment. I thought that was a very good program. I keep confusing it with Bridge to Success, but this is Bridge to Employment, and what Johnson &amp; Johnson is doing, that partnership with Inglewood, is something that we all need to applaud, and it was outstanding to see the engagement of the students and the employees working with our students, and I thought that was great. Also, congratulations to the Teacher of the Year, semi-finalist, I think, I don't know if anybody were able to take it. We were all down in Tampa, I think, so, but I just want to congratulate all of them. I didn't get one this year, which is the first for me. And then the JTA partnership at Rufous E. Payne is outstanding. Being able to see and ride an autonomous vehicle, a lot of those students won't be driving, they will be riding an autonomous vehicle in the future. You won't, you won't be using gasoline, you'll be plugging into, if you are driving, into an outlet. So I think that's good for the future, so kids can see that they have a bright future in, in a different area of, of our city. And also, congratulations to Katrina Brown, the new principal at Timmerclough Elementary School. I think we have a star there and look forward to working with her. And finally, happy holidays to all those who are watching us, and have a safe and enjoyable holiday season. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Board Member Jones. Now we'll move to Board Member Hershey.
Thank you. So Board Member Pearson already reported on the Florida School Board Association Board of Directors Meeting. I've been on that Board for four years now, and that was the most attended meeting by people who weren't on the Board. So all of the Board Members who were present during the, the Board of Directors Meeting here with Duval County were present there, and I will say that I did see Board Member Pearson texting right away after the vote was taken. Do want to add that part of the conversation too is, is that while we are separating from the National School Board Association, there is a, an effort underway now with about twenty other states to form a, another alternative national association for public education that's in the works and will be forthcoming over the next several months, but it could be exciting. And for public education in the future, I don't think we're going to lose a national platform. I think it's going to look really different. I do want to point out something that we haven't talked about a whole lot, and that's Hazel Health. And I had an opportunity with Dr. Krizner to be at Loretto Elementary, and if you have a child enrolled in our schools, and if you have signed the consent form to participate, when your child gets, feels ill at school and goes to the school nurse, the fact that right there at school, they can access a healthcare professional virtually and get a diagnosis and even send a prescription for you to pick up, it's phenomenal. I have four children, I had four children at four different schools as they were growing up, and the hours I spent in a doctor's office, I feel like I could retire on if I got paid, you know, for each of those hours with ear infections and strep throat and those kinds of things. So this is a really neat opportunity and a dimension that, that as we have expanded healthcare, I think it's important, and believe it or not, many of the schools in our suburbs are taking greater advantage of this than throughout the district. I believe that that is correct per Dr. Krizner in our conversation. So I know people in the Mandrin area at least are enjoying this additional layer for health, safety in our schools, so I just wanted to mention that and also say that there are some job opportunities there. If anybody's looking for a job, you might want to contact the, the district because I know we have some openings in other schools. Would like to congratulate Mandarin Oaks, Ms. Lilly, and Crown Points, Ms. Hildenbrand, and I may have said her name wrong. Both are the top five, in the top five semifinalists for Teacher of the Year, which is like a first in the five years I've been on the Board. I've never had two teachers make it that far, so I'm very excited about that. Again, would like to celebrate Atlantic Coast and Mandarin High School for the recognition tonight. And finally, just wanted to share on the consent agenda, we did pass an MOU with Reed USA, and I spoke with Ms. Renfro yesterday about this, and I wanted to share just a few things that she shared with me as I talked to her about this MOU that I think is significant. She said that this MOU was really set up to help students close that achievement gap that would have been established due to COVID. And over the summer, Reed USA piloted a program that we were going to see in our schools that had remarkable results where student achievement, and the students made great gains in reading. So I'm very excited, and I'll also point out that the, the students who participate and do the tutoring will actually get paid. So there's a lot to that package, and just wanted to give a shout out. I, I see our partners back there, but did want to recognize and clarify and, and let you all know some exciting things that are happening regarding literacy, which Chair Willie pointed out was one of our big emphasis coming up.
Thank you, Board Member Hershey. Now we'll move on to Board Member Anderson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started tonight, I do want to send my thoughts and my condolences to the families that lost four babies this week in Oxford in Michigan. These tragedies are senseless, and it's heartbreaking, and my condolences. With that being said, I will turn to some congratulations for the opportunities that our kids have here in Duval County Public Schools. I want to say congratulations again to Mr. Ledford and the Fletcher Team for being recognized in the U.S. News and World Report as one of the top high schools. I do want to send congratulations again to Jacksonville Beach Elementary School for being a Blue Ribbon school. They work tirelessly, she must have like a whole folks devoted to national magnet status and Blue Ribbon. I mean, it takes so much work to apply for these things and to get these applications as full and robust. I mean, they, they have a lot of accomplishments to put in these applications, but it's tough work, and I appreciate that they do that because it helps us as a district be able to recognize their accomplishments, but also lifts us up across the board. And so I'm, I'm proud to support them and to represent Jacksonville Beach Elementary. This is my first time that I have a teacher in the Teacher of the Year finalist from District Two, so I definitely want to say congratulations to Mr. Nelson from Sable Palm Elementary. I am excited to congratulate him and to recognize him and honor him during our Teacher of the Year celebration coming up in January. And finally, Landmark was recognized by Community First Credit Union as a November School of the Month, and so I'm super proud of Landmark and Ms. Tyson White and the Landmark family. So congratulations to you all, and I can't wait to come to you and do that celebration. So we have a lot of celebrating happening. I also want to say what a great time I had at the Florida School Board Association Conference. The joint conference is always such a good time. It's great to fellow, to fellowship with other Board Members and to network, but it's also great to see some of our other partners. I love seeing the Principals down there, the Lobbyists are down there, so all of the people that are helping make public education function in the state of Florida come together. And I, it is a great time for renewal and inspiration, especially when we are facing difficult and challenging times, as we all have been over the last couple of years. One of my favorite things about the conference this time was hearing from not only Principals, but teachers and students. So they did a really good job putting together panel discussions. The Teacher of the Year for the State of Florida was there from Pinellas County, Ms. Sarah Panner, and I really appreciated her message. She encouraged us all to find joy. Enjoy was an acronym, and the J stood for joining together. It reminded me of Board Member, excuse me, Chairman Willie's comments about being connected and, and having that be our focus, because when we are working together as a community, then we are able to move the needle forward in a way that just doesn't happen when we are all disjointed parts or, or in boats rowing in different directions. And so I'm excited for that. The O stood for owning your data. And at first, I was kind of like, eh, I, as much as I love data, you know, the fact that we focus so much on testing data and that this is like the thing that drives everything makes me a little crazy, let's just be honest. But what I loved about it is not, her message was that when you really own your data, you're not afraid of it, right? We can look at the weak spots, we can look at where we have room to grow and improve. We're not just trying to ignore where we can make changes and progress. And so I really liked that there was an opportunity for us to really own it in a way that isn't fearful or worried about the negative stuff, but uses it as an opportunity to grow and change. And the why in her finding joy was yet. It was really focused on having a growth mindset. I'm all about the yet, so I really appreciate her message to us, and also goes back to the Chairman's statements of, of joy and having joy in the work that we do. So I'm really kind of feeling like a full circle moment here tonight from Florida School Boards Association, and, and it was a great conference. I do want to share the, the letter that was sent by Andrea Messina, our executive, from the Executive Director of the Florida School Boards Association. I won't share the whole letter, but I want to note that this, the Florida School Boards Association stopped paying our dues to the National School Board Association a while ago. She knows that in July, July first, 2021, we did not pay dues. This was well before any letter was sent from the National School Boards Association, and I think that there's some misrepresentation of the relationship between the Florida School Boards Association and NSBA, the National School Boards Association. Ms. Messina says, "We have been clear about reassessing the value of our affiliation with NSBA due to concerns surrounding NSBA's governance, leadership, transparency, and failure to embrace nonpartisanship." The decision, she goes on to say, "The decision to allow our membership to lapse was made in response to several years of persistent pattern of dysfunction within the NSBA organization and among those charged with its governance." So I just want to be able to make sure that, you know, we have an opportunity or when we have an opportunity, to make sure the record is clear, that people understand this is not a decision that was taken lightly. I think it's a really exciting time, a really curious time for what happens in the space of public education on a national front as these states come together and look at creating a new organization. I'm excited that Florida is going to help pioneer that work, but I think we have to tread lightly, we have to keep our eyes open and make sure that our focus is steadfast on students, what's good for children, what's good for our communities. Which reminds me of another conference breakout session that I went to that was focused on children. It was hosted by our own A.J. Cribiel from Council of Great City Schools. And although it was very familiar to me and Ms. Pearson as we sat in there, because he worked with us so closely on our strategic plan. worked with us so closely on our strategic plan as a consultant, it was interesting to me that so many board members around the state felt like this type of relentless focus on student achievement and student outcomes was a new concept. And I was really proud to sit in that room and feel like, oh, we got this. We did this. We went to our community. We know what our community's vision and values are. We have created a strategic plan that is focused on student outcomes, that represents the people that we represent. And I'm excited to get doing that work. As Dr. Green spoke tonight about the Smart Service Plan and that piece of our culture for our schools, I couldn't have been more excited. I think the opportunity for us to really invest in modeling, not only as a district for our schools, but for our schools to our families and our community is really exciting. And I think that that trickle down or ripple out, as I like to say, is more accurate, is really a great spot for us to be. One of the things that I really appreciated about your presentation tonight, Dr. Green, is what a reflection of that particular program is of your heart. And I know, having worked with you closely over the years, that this is not a new initiative because we feel like we need to check a box, but this is really what we believe as a district. And the opportunity for us to invest deeply in providing that level of customer service is just a reflection of who we are. And I really appreciate your willingness to move that initiative forward. I will say, I was excited to pass the teacher salary thing tonight. It's not where we need to be. And I do want to say I'm sorry to the veteran teachers and just acknowledge that it's, you know, if you, for a one-year teacher and a 14-year teacher or 13-year teacher, I think it's 14, to be making the same salary is really tough. And we are doing as much as we can. We hear you, Ms. Brady. We've got, we've got work to do. I'm happy that we were able to lift up our paras and our office professionals. That was hard. Budgeting is hard, but we recognize you, we honor you, we know that this has been tough times and we're doing the best that we can. And hopefully, we can continue to move that needle forward as we continue in the future. Before I let you all go, I do want to share some words of wisdom from Lao Tzu. It really, tonight was the customer service. It was the FSBA. It was all coming together for me. So Lao Tzu says, "Watch your thoughts, they become your words. Watch your words, they become actions. Watch your actions, they become habit. Watch your habits, they become character. Watch your character, it becomes your destiny." And so I think as we continue to put all of these pieces in place for Duval County Public Schools, we have a very bright future ahead of us. Our destiny and our outlook looks good. So, Mr. Chairman, congratulations on your first meeting. I will see you all next year. Have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Board Member Anderson. Vice Chair Coker.
So when you go second to last, people have stolen a lot of your thunder. I just kept tossing my list off like, okay, somebody got that one. So I'm going to add or echo on a few points. I'm going to add to Board Member Pearson's on the high school acceleration. When we talk about high school acceleration, we're talking about AP Capstone, Early College, ACE and IB. The reason I mention that is because Terry Parker, I know I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, is bringing an early college program online for the first time this coming school year, for the next school year. They're recruiting now, and I'm thrilled about that in Arlington. While it is not located off I-95 like Pine Forest, it is conveniently located off the Arlington Expressway at the base of the Matthews Bridge. So can be, can be, can be found from all areas of our city, and we'd love to see you in Arlington. That being said, I want to make sure I throw a huge thank you to Senator Audrey Gibson as well as the Boeing Organization. Today, they hosted a group of our Embry-Riddle dual enrollment students from Terry Parker. And we did virtual exercises where they put the little thing on and they were like doing stuff on the screen. And they, they put out a fire on an airplane, a military aircraft. They changed a tire on a Humvee. It was amazing. And I just, I thank you to Senator Gibson for making this happen for the students at Parker. I will tell you in talking to the people at Boeing, I was thrilled to hear, because I was going to email the superintendent, like Board Member Pearson said, but I found out that Mr. Wright, our Assistant Superintendent who oversees CTE programs, has already met with Boeing and is working on bringing some programming along the lines of what they need. So that was exciting. But thank you to Senator Audrey, the State Senator Audrey Gibson, because she is the one that made it happen for our children today. Groundbreaking, on Friday at Fort Caroline Middle School, more good things happening in Arlington. I hope that you all will be there. But we are having a groundbreaking for the Performing Arts Center at the Fort Caroline Middle School campus. This is a program that was made into an arts magnet a number of years ago, but has never had the facilities they need to actually do the performing arts. And Dr. Green has graciously pushed this project along, and I'm so appreciative of that. I will also say thank you to Mr. Pierce in the back for helping to put it all together to, I know Paul Suarez is not here tonight, but Mr. Suarez, always just moving projects along. And Dana Krizner, a little behind the scenes prompting of this project as well. Thank you to you for doing a little history research on it. We are excited and I hope you'll be there with us. I think from Mr. Suarez, I've found that it's the first auditorium that the district will have built in almost 20 years. We've built some cafeteriums, but not an auditorium. So just FYI, a little DCPS trivia tonight. I want to make sure I think, recognize Dr. Green. Dr. Green was recently made an honorary member of Leadership Jacks. And because I am a data nerd, I went through and scrolled, scrolled through 20 years of Leadership Jacks class lists. It was a Saturday night, I needed something to do. And I believe that you are a first superintendent to be an honorary member at Leadership Jacks. And I'm just excited to have you as a part of that organization and congratulations on that item. Good to see her getting recognized as always. I was going to talk about Reed USA and how excited I am about the partnerships. I'll just echo Board Member Hershey's sentiments. We are grateful for the work that you're doing in the community. You guys are awesome, and I can't wait to see how this all works out. Want to do a thank you to City Council Member Aaron Bowman. Aaron Bowman has been recently, he has been the chairperson of Special Committee on Redistricting. And never before have we had a scenario where two school board members were asked to be a part of that committee. Chair Willie and myself were actually appointed as liaisons on that committee. We attended all of the committee meetings, and it wasn't just a perfunctory. We were there. Chairperson Bowman incorporated us into the work, allowed our opinions and thoughts to be heard. And so I just want to thank him as well as City Council for allowing us to be a part of that conversation. I will tell you, there will be community-wide meetings in regards to this topic, and Dr. Green has graciously allowed that committee to use our schools so that they will be at a few of our high schools sometime late January and early February. So watch, actually, City Council website for those dates. But again, thank you to Aaron Bowman on that. Do want to make sure I congratulate all the high schools that were recognized earlier in this meeting. And I will say, that's the work of a lot of amazing teachers and principals, but I will also say, having been a principal, that behind the teachers and the principals are often leaders at the regional level who do incredible work and create cultures where principals feel emboldened to move their work forward. So I want to make sure I also mention, last year, Executive Directors Tim Simmons and Kenneth Reddick were a part of that work in making that happen, as well as our High School Region Superintendent then, Scott Snyder, who is now our Chief of Schools. We found out tonight why you now are the Chief of Schools. I've never seen that many high schools on a list. So congratulations to them for that work. And then finally, a happy holiday to all. But as I say, a happy holiday to all, a reminder that we have many children in our city who won't necessarily wake up to that big toy or that big meal. So if you are a family that can give in our community, we have amazing faith-based partners and nonprofits who help bridge the gap for our children who need that. So I ask you to reach forward and do something kind for the children in our city who would otherwise not have something on those holiday mornings. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Coker. So I have about four or five pages of notes that I would like to start with. I kid, no, I'm going to just check these off. Boeing, check. Senator Gibson, amazing, amazing work there. Redistricting, check. We were, and Board Member Jones too, thank you for bringing that to light because I think with your, your history and experience, you said, hey, we should be in these conversations. It was quite helpful. FSBA, thank you for all the different reports. Also, that was an opportunity where the Superintendent of the Year was named, so now Dr. Green does not have to wear that heavy crown, but she is always our Superintendent of the Year. So someone else was recognized. I don't even remember who it is because they're not as important. Also, Highlands Middle School, just shout them out really quickly. They had an amazing club day where the students actually gained points and they went to different clubs around the whole school. And Principal Munjan actually did a club, his club was music producing. So he brought in his like drum beat machines and all these other things. And I was like, what? So he produces electronic music and taught the students. So I thought it was a cool way to get the students engaged and have that carrot. BTS High School at APR was our Community First School of the Month in November, so shout outs to them. And just speaking of all the partnerships and things that we can do if we create connections, just shout out to City Years out there. I see Alicia and Ellen and Rob out there. Those are the kind of partnerships we need. Also, ones with the city. We passed something on the consent agenda with Brentwood, making that now us, now we have the availability and ability to work with the city to make that the new library in Brentwood, which would expand that space tremendously. So hopefully, we'll see that project move along. Also, U.S. News &amp; World Report, Darnell and Stanton were on that list in District Four. Always do a tremendous job. And last two things, 40% chance this year, there's a 40% chance this Teacher of the Year will come from District Four. Shayla Lee, Shayla Lee from Biscayne Elementary School and Charles Darwin Magdelouya from Jean Rebault will be out on, on the stage. So, and as the chair, I don't know if it's happened where the chair gets to say their, their school board, a member from their school board, but very excited about them and all the other finalists as well. And I'm just excited about that opportunity to be able to celebrate our teachers. And last, happy holidays to every single person listening today. Have a safe one out there and let someone know that you love them and you care for them because it's important this time of year. And with that.
Move adjourned.
Move to adjourned. Moved by Board Member Hershey, seconded by Board Member Pearson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.